No, I think dogs get fat really quickly if they don't get enough exercise. Winnie, we got her last year around this time, and she was thirty-five pounds. And Scott took her to the vet for a while yesterday, and she weighs forty-five pounds. And she's a medium-sized dog, she's not a big dog. So that's kind of problematic. Well, me and Winnie have to, but yeah, she really needs to, you know, eat less. My dad's eaten a lot of treats, and the vet tech says that one treat is about like a hamburger to a dog, like, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is March the 11th. We'll first have our invocation by the esteemed Reverend Gene Fields of One Church. After that, our Mayor Pro Tem will lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Please stand for the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Our dear Heavenly Father, by the very definition of invocation, Father, we invite you into this room. Father, we invite your presence. Father, we invite your wisdom and your love. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. Father, it's a gift from you, as every day is and every moment is. And Father, again, we just thank you for that. Father, I just ask blessings on our mayor and our city council, Father. Bless them beyond all measure. Bless them with your wisdom. Father, I pray that they see our community with your heart and with your eyes and with your love. Father, we just always want to be reminded to ask for prayers for our first responders of our community, Father, and just thankful that there are so many that put their lives on the line, Father, for our safety and health. Again, Father, we love you. We thank you that we get to pray in this setting, and, Father, we don't take that lightly. In your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you Pastor Fields. We appreciate the prayer and the encouragement. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. I'm Douglasville's Mayor Rochelle Robinson. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in whole or in part by teleconference. Please permit me to confirm that I think the Assistant City Manager said that we do have people that are going to speak online, so I'll give instructions about that. This is an open meeting of the Douglasville Mayor and Councils being conducted by teleconference consistent with official code of Georgia annotated Section 50-14-1G. Due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of the coronavirus and to reduce the risk of COVID-19 illness, that section, code section you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows local governments to meet by teleconference and in person in the event of an emergency so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening by Zoom app as shown on the city's website describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. Okay, now, I'll just give some instructions about how the meeting is going to go tonight, and then we will follow the agenda that's presented for us. Okay, this meeting is by committee, so each committee chairperson will call that committee to order, and we're only permitted during times for zoning matters to allow public comments. And each person has thirty minutes to give for that particular section is either thirty, twenty minutes, I apologize, twenty minutes for those in opposition and twenty minutes for those in support, and each person has five minutes to speak. If it goes beyond that time, then you can split up your time and you can speak three minutes apiece, but in totality, it's twenty minutes for those in support and those in opposition. So the committee chairperson will call the committee to order and then ask for those to give their information. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask you to please power those off or put them in silent mode so they will not be disruptive during the meeting. The committee chairperson will read the agenda items, and the person presenting or representing that agenda item will come forward and give us your information, your name and address for the record. When you come to the podium or to the, we don't have a podium anymore, but the microphone, please give us your name and address for the record. Myself and council members were possibly asked for clarifying questions to help us make our decisions. There is a form or card that you should have filled out if you're in person and with your name and address and information, and hand that to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, and state if you're for or against that item. Each person, again, has three minutes, I mean, five minutes unless you have more than four or five people to split up your time. This meeting is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're just here to receive your information and try to make an informed decision on next Monday. If you have printed materials, please hand that to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right and your left in the rear. I believe that's it. There is a portion, if there is some business that is not discussed on our agenda where there's time for citizens and delegates to come forward at the end of the meeting, and you can certainly come to the microphone, and you have five minutes to express your concerns for anything that is germane to city business of Douglasville. So now we will go to our agenda that's presented to us, and we do have, I'll try to get my machine to come, it just popped off for a second. Oh, we have presentation of the 2021 Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy class, and that is our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. It is my honor tonight to present to you the fourth graduating class of Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy. We started off with about seventeen participants who either live, work, play, like to have fun in Douglasville, with a few exceptions that actually live in Douglas County area. But all of these individuals have successfully completed the requirements. It's a ten-week class. They've attended all ten sessions.
Oh, my gosh.
I was joking with them on Tuesday as well as today earlier and saying, y'all are the longest class because they started in February of 2020.
Oh, my gosh.
And they are officially graduating about a year and one month later, in March.
That's funny.
So they will forever be the longest Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy class. But these individuals, they participated in several activities. They did a mock budget. They presented to a mock mayor and council. They were a little tough on themselves.
Oh, wow.
They balanced the budget, and they passed it by like a small amount. I think they passed it by like a four-three vote. But they got to actually balance the budget, see what all entails, as well as speak with a lot of our department directors, community development, parks and rec. They got to deal with public safety and talk about what all entails to be a public safety officer. We also got into a little diversity of our employees. We talked about economic development. They got to visit with Mr. Chris Pumpfree. During that time, they talked about the different stores or restaurants they wanted.
Krispy Kreme?
They wanted Krispy Kreme. They also wanted Ruth Chris, so they, you know, they talked all about that. But these individuals, it's been a pleasure throughout the pandemic and whatnot. They always checked up on each other. They emailed me, make sure everything was good. They always asked me, when are we going to start back up? So we finally started back, and we had about four sessions that were all virtual this year, and I'm super proud. They were still interactive. If they missed a class, they said, hey, can I get a recording of the class?
Oh, good.
They were still very interactive and asked as many questions as possible. So I am so happy that they are graduating today and that they decided to continue with the class.
Oh.
So we do have a few individuals that are on virtually that are unable to be with us tonight, but I will call out each of their names. The ones that are present will stand. The ones that are on virtually, I already spoke with them, so they'll just get their certificates later on, but I am super proud of the class.
Yes, ma'am.
So Mayor and Council, the following individuals have completed the requirements as it relates to the Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy class. Ms. Roxanne Grimes, Ms. Lisa Robertson, Ms. Deondra Marshall, Ms. Jessica Frazier, Ms. Celeste Christopher, Ms. Antoinette Wright, Ms. Yvette Harvey, Ms. Natalie Faust, Ms. Nobe Mitchell, Ms. Iris Adams Welch. And the individuals who are unable to be with us tonight but are also part of the 2020-21 class is Ms. Leila Serrano, Ms. Tanya Parsina, Ms. Tanithia Cole, Mr. Lawrence Henderson, Ms. Stephanie McFall, Ms. Jessie Mosley, and Ms. Tracy Barnes. So Mayor and City Council, the seventeen individuals that are named consist of the 2020-21 Citizens Academy class. They've completed all requirements set upon them, all activities and sessions, and it's my pleasure to have worked with them. I wish them success in the future as they navigate through their neighborhood and become very proactive citizens. Thank you.
That's right. Let's give them a hand. Congratulations. Thank you so much, and thank you for coming to the meeting. I thought I recognized names and faces. I said, did they just repeat or, you know? So, very good. Congratulations. Thank you all for taking time to learn about your community and really sacrificing your time, even in a pandemic, that you were, you had perseverance, you pressed through. So congratulations. Did you get a chance to meet the chief when you were doing the police part?
No.
All right, Chief, stand up. There's the chief, Sparks back there. That's the, look, look at him, look at him. Woo-hoo. So if you have any questions. Oh, gosh. Well, thank you so much, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now we'll move on with our committees. Number five on our agenda is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have two items tonight under finance. The first is to authorize the mayor to sign a construction contract with the L.C. Whitford Company Incorporated for the Riverside Bridge over Sweetwater Creek Project. Ms. April McCowen spoke to us in our committee meetings this evening, and we'll ask her to reiterate that information again for us as we prepare for Monday. Ms. McCowen?
Thank you. April McCowen, 6701 Church Street. So what you see before you is the contract for L.C. Whitford Company Incorporated for the Riverside Parkway Bridge Rehabilitation. The bid amount is eight forty-three, eight eighty-seven. Project budget was seven twenty-four, two sixty-nine. We have put in a tip modification, just as, just to reiterate that, where we are now adjusting to six seventy-five, ten as the federal match, which is eighty percent of total project cost, and one sixty-eight, seven seventy-eight for the local match, which is what the city would be on the hook for. And so we are going to be looking at a hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen and seventy-nine cent budget amendment in April to concur this cost.
Thank you, Ms. McCowen. I know that we have spoke of this and discussed it already in our five o'clock meeting. Just to reiterate, and I did get some other information between meetings, our city manager informing that this has actually been something that's been ongoing for well over ten years. Who would have thought that it would have taken that long? But it has come to fruition, and we are responsible for that portion of the road, and we were given the grant. I'm thankful that we actually have the funds after everything that we have been through in the last twelve months to be able to come up with our portion of that grant. So it will move forward. I know that Councilman Estes had asked the question about timeframe. As soon as DOT allows us to let the project, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get moving on it, and from completion, from start to completion is supposed to be a hundred and eighty days, correct, Ms. McCowen?
That is correct.
Questions, comments? I know that they have gone through the bid process. We're required to take the low bid, and you've heard that information. Is there any reason that we could not have this on the consent agenda? We have everyone here. Coach, did you have something to ask? We have everyone here tonight in person, and so just curious if there's any reason why we could not put this on the consent agenda or if legal would tell us not to do that. Okay? I would like that, if possible. Try to shorten that meeting a little bit if we can. Second item, authorize the sale of the city's water and sewer easement rights on tax parcels zero eight one oh one, eight two oh oh five five, and zero two seven five eight one five two oh oh two seven to the fee owner of these lots, and authorize the mayor to sign a quick claim deed and any related documents for this purpose. Ms. Woodward?
Thank you, Councilman Adams. You may remember that the city was approached several weeks ago by the developers for the Kensington Phase Two property about the water and sewer easement on the property. This easement, you have authorized the city staff to receive a quick claim deed from Douglas County because they were initially approached by a developer, but they were not comfortable directly deeding it over to the owner slash developer, so they decided to give it to the City of Douglasville instead. And we have already completed, completed the recordation of that particular quick claim deed, and now we are at the step to transfer the easement to the owner or development of that property. To avoid gratuity issues and because there isn't an exact location of the easement, staff has calculated a sales price based on the highest possible value of the easement and the lowest possible value of the easement, and then split that value in half, which comes to a dollar sales price of eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. The owner has agreed to pay this amount, and we are seeking authorization from the city council to, to complete the sale and to also authorize the mayor to sign a quick claim deed to the fee owners. Please let me answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Madam Mayor, council members? Any questions concerning the item? Again, we've discussed this several times, and I guess this was dropped in our lap because the subdivision is in my ward, so it's in the city, therefore, any easements that are there on the property would then be, I guess, a city, a city situation now since the county's not involved. And we, as, as the attorney has stated, we don't really know where particularly these are, these easements are on the lots, so we would be giving a quick claim deed of any interest that we might have in exchange for the funds. No questions, comments? I'm going to ask the same question then. Is there any reason that we cannot place this on the consent agenda? All right. See, no reason not to. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have under finance tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And Ms. Woodward, we'll move on then to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
We have no business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under Personnel and Organization. Item A, to adopt an ordinance to amend Section eight dash three of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Ordinance Regarding Employee Discipline. And this, Austin Bing, I believe, is going to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Tia Austin Bing, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources Department. This item before you is a recommendation to amend the personnel policies and procedures as it relates to employee conduct and discipline. I worked with Ms. Littlefield on revising this section to include more conduct subject to discipline. What we did in preparation for that was did a look back of about the last three years of personnel meetings that we've sat in on, that we've helped to mitigate issues that concerned discipline that weren't clearly and concisely spelled out in the Policies and Procedures Manual. And so we brought those recommendations to Ms. Littlefield, worked together to decide what exactly we wanted to include so that it wasn't so vague, and the items before you is those recommendations. You should see, I believe, two documents there. One is a breakdown of the redline version, and one is the final version.
Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. Any questions or comments? Madam Mayor?
No, sir.
All right. So this is just a housekeeping, clean, clean up the ordinance and make it a little bit easier to work with, I guess.
Yes, sir. I would agree with that. It just helps us to be able to provide more, better guidance to our managers and supervisors when they are having issues, and relating those and assigning policy for those as opposed to it being sort of a gray area. So it just gives us a better roadmap to be able to correlate those issues to, and again, spell it out more clearly and concisely in the PPP.
Thank you. Anybody? Councilman Davis, did you have something? Okay, anybody?
I did have a question now. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. There was one in here that talked about a false statement, discovery of a false statement on a job application, the number fifteen.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be from out of state as well? I know we had a situation where the person moved to here from another state and did not have anything falsified from Georgia, but from another state, it did come up that there was an issue. So is it clear in that respect?
I believe what you may be mentioning would be if we were to do references and background, but that is particularly relating to any statements on the application itself.
Okay.
So, for instance, if someone provided information that we checked from an HR standpoint that wasn't, that didn't match the application, and we proved it to be false, then that would be a reason, that can be a reason for us to reject that application.
Okay. So it, so is that covered, though? I mean, for example, it was an arrest in another state, and I don't know if our application just said in the state of Georgia, or have you ever had, you know, a felony or something, and they said no, and then it was in another state where they had an arrest record?
Well, now we abide by the band-the-box as far as the questions on the applications, but when we get into the background process, if, that's a part of our ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
We have a separate ordinance for that.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. If there are no objections, can we place this on the consent agenda for Monday night? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, that's all we had tonight under Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to item number ten, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We'll start Planning and Development Committee with item A, hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for a community recreation facility on a property zoned R2, single-family residential detached district, being approximately thirty point ninety-six acres at twenty-two eighty Pine Drive in Land Lot Eighty, District One, Section Five, Parcells Forty-three and Fifty-five. Application by Exodus Ranch, care of Melody W. Pratt. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The applicant requests a special land use permit under the following regulations of the City of Douglasville Unified Development Ordinance, Sections 2.02(c) allowed principal use table. The applicant is seeking a slot for a community recreation facility. The subject property is developed with an existing horse ranch. According to their website, the venue is used to facilitate healing, comfort, fellowship, and love for foster children, special needs citizens, senior adults, at-risk children, and other vulnerable souls through equine assistance programs. As a result of a zoning item outside of the city limits, we were made aware of this venue. After having discussions with the mayor and council, staff worked with the applicant in looking at options to come into compliance. If approved, the applicant will then be able to get a business license and receive whatever necessary approval from the Georgia Department of Agriculture. In addressing concerns related to if the applicant decides to leave the area, we ask that the slot be limited to providing equine assistant therapeutic and educational programs and activities, excluding large-scale special events, i.e. professional rodeos or block parties. In addition, the slot would expire in two years.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there an applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Present that would like to speak concerning the application? If so, please come forward. We'd like to hear from you, and if you would approach the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, and, and give us your information, please.
Good evening. I'm Melody Wilcox Pratt. Address is two-two-eight-zero Pine Drive, Douglasville, Georgia, three-zero-one-three-five, and I'm the Executive Director of the Exodus Ranch. As Patrice so kindly told you all about the ranch, I do have some information here. I'd be happy to give you if you'd like me to approach and give it to you. No?
No, it has to go to the clerk, and she'll make.
It goes through the clerk, ma'am. You can hand it to her, and then she can give it to us. It's okay.
That just gives you some more information on the ranch and some of the things that we do, as well as some of the pictures of the, the special needs folks that we help and the foster children. It's our goal to, as she said, help the most vulnerable in our community. The programs that we have been doing, and again, it's out of, I will say, ignorance because the property had been used for horses since the nineties when it was built. When we came there, we did not realize that it was something we needed to change, so we didn't do anything maliciously, we just did not know. We are a nonprofit, and we work with the Douglas County Special Olympics. They practice on our ranch horses, and then we take them to their meets when they do their meets. And this year, if everything goes well, they also hope to have a couple special Olympics equestrian shows at the ranch just to bring the community, and so they can kind of see what our folks in this area are doing because they are so very special. We also work with foster children. I grew up with adopted and foster children in my home, and it's something that I have a heart for. There are so many foster children in the area that many of the homes are full. I'm sorry. But that being said, a lot of them struggle with PTSD and other problems associated with being abandoned. So what we do is we bring them in, and they are allowed to ride. We have big parties for them. We bring in petting zoos, and we have a nineteen-foot water slide and a bounce house and mechanical bull and a rodeo team that does demonstrations for them, and the community comes together and brings in food, and it's just a great big party, and we do as many of those a year as we can. And we also work one-on-one with foster children that are struggling. We are not a therapeutic program per se. The horses are the therapy. So we don't offer therapy. We let them come out and interact with the animals, and that's the therapy for them. Same thing with special needs homes. When they come out, it's not therapy, they just interact with the animals. And, you know, we've had some of these special needs homes that come out, and the, the folks that, that help them, their advisors and helpers that are in the homes with them, will say, you know, so-and-so doesn't speak, and now the only word that they say is horse, 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 horse. So it's just amazing to watch the things that happen there. We do do, we do do some fundraising events at the ranch to help us continue doing what we're doing. So that's, that's pretty much it. And because I have your attention right now, once everything is taken care of, and I'm going to walk in faith and say that it will be, we'd like to invite you all out to see what we do because these are your kids, your special needs folks, and the foster kids in our community. So we would love to have you come out and see what we do.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Just hold your position right there for just a moment if you could. I'm just going to see if, if the council or if Madam Mayor may have any questions for you.
Certainly.
And then we will allow time for anyone else that would like to speak. Madam Mayor, did you have questions or comments?
Not a question, a comment. I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing and for the least of these and making a difference in the community. And I understand sometimes things just happen. I know it wasn't intentional not to have the permit, but as you've said, I've been aware for many years that you're located there and that it was an equestrian place and for horses, and so I know it wasn't, it wasn't anything nefarious that you were trying to do. So we just appreciate you coming in and trying to get it right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Coach Watts?
Looking at our attachments, it's amazing what y'all do out there, and I guess I only have one question. What happened when y'all were asked to respond within thirty days to, to the finance department? I was just curious about, about that.
Why we didn't respond to it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Again, I'm going to, I'm going to claim ignorance. When we got that in, I did not realize that it was something I had to do right away, and I was very honest when I talked to the zoning board and told them that a lot of what we do at the ranch is greatly going to depend on what happens with those a hundred and fifty-four townhomes that are going on in front of us. And we wanted to wait and find out how that went before we decided what we were going to do, because honestly, I, I think it will affect us, and it's just going to determine how much that affects what we do at the ranch as to whether or not we're able to stay long-term. So my thinking was, I want to wait and see what happens, and I did not realize that it was a, I needed to do it right now. So I have been thrown into what I do. I have a real heart for it. real heart for it. I am not a businesswoman. So I don't mean to make fun of that, but a lot of it's great to me.
And my other question is, depending on how things go with the vote and everything, will they have to have something from Animal Control to continue other than a business license or what will that?
Well, this is my understanding with my conversation with Franklin, that they need to, Georgia Department of Agriculture as well, getting a permit from them. And they can't get it because they don't have a business license.
Okay, so that comes first. I see. Okay, that's, thank you very much and thank you for what y'all have been doing in the community for a while.
It's our pleasure. It truly is.
Mr. Mayor Protem, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Pratt, thank you for that presentation. I understand based on what I heard about the history, there was a little bit of misunderstanding regarding the boundary of the city limits near your property, but that's all straightened out. So I would like to say on behalf of the City Council, welcome to the City of Douglasville.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We do things a little differently around here. It sounds like you're doing a good job at what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Yes, way, Councilman.
Just a very brief comment. I have heard incredible things about the work that you do.
Thank you.
So thank you very, very much and keep going.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other. Ms. Miller, did you have a comment?
I did. I just wanted to thank you for being here this evening and taking the time to explain to us everything that you guys are doing over there. Special needs is very near and dear to my heart. So that was definitely tugging at my heartstrings right there. And I know that this has been a really tough road for you guys, but if I could just say, maybe the silver lining is bringing more awareness to what you guys are doing in the community. Because sadly enough, I did not know that you guys were even there until everything got started last summer. So thank you for everything that you guys are doing in the community, really. It means a lot.
Thank you. And that's me. I apologize.
Were you trying to time yourself? Is that what you were doing?
I honestly turned it off, but the alarm just went. I guess it didn't turn off. I apologize. Thank you so much.
If there are no other questions, then I'm going to...
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dr. Burdany.
That's all right. Do you want to turn off for a second?
I know.
Pick up the phone.
Set to make sure that all persons from the race and age were shut.
That's okay. Thank you so much. I too have a special heart for, for those that are special needs individuals. So what type of training do you receive from, for whatever organization? I know you're passionate about it, but when you're working with special needs individuals, of course, you know patience and I see that you have definitely some grace. What type of training do you receive in your staff?
All right. Well, let me be very clear. The special needs that we work with, we have the Special Olympics. They have path certified instructors that work with them. When we have the group homes come out, they don't ride. They just come out and interact. So for that, you don't have to have anybody on staff that's specially trained to deal with that because they bring their own group home leaders or whatever. If they're riding, that's a different thing. But to just have them there, that doesn't take it. And they do special, Special Olympics does have their own path certified people.
Okay. And also, how have you been able to operate appropriately during this pandemic? I know you've been doing great, but how have you been able to operate?
Well, because we are an outside facility and there is plenty of room to social distance, it has not been an issue. And I'll be real honest, this pandemic has brought more people to us because there's, there wasn't a whole lot for kids to do. So, you know, they wanted to come out. We could do private pony rides or whatever and just, you know, they, they had their own deal and it was a couple families at a time and you could just space it out. So...
Right. With all the anxiety and depression and things that are going on, that's awesome. Do you also extend your services to geriatrics?
We have a, I'm sorry, we have a program called Pups and Ponies for seniors. And we take, we weren't able to do it this last year because of COVID. That was a restriction. We couldn't go. They, they wouldn't bring them out. But we will take, we have little miniature horses that are about this big, little miniature donkey, and we have two dogs. And we take them to senior centers and then the seniors can come outside and they interact with them. And we've done that in the past. In fact, we did one of the homes right here in Douglasville, Douglas County. And it's really fun to have them come out and just, you know, interact and play and touch and they just absolutely love it.
That's great. Thank you. No other questions?
Thank you. I do have one question. Ms. Pratt, I did have a call a few days ago from a concerned citizen that is involved with the Special Olympics and I believe your deal with them is coming up in the next few weeks there on site. Is that correct?
Well, we've got, what we did is, is we put out a notice that said prayerfully, we will be moving ahead because in order to schedule things, we can't wait till the last minute. So we have to schedule and get volunteers in place and then, you know, hopefully everything will move forward and we can do that. Our next big thing that we have coming up is actually April 17th and that's a foster fund day. Special Olympics, they're, they're beginning their practices. They will be, their, their first show is in May. So they need to start practicing now too. So that's kind of the issue is, is moving things ahead so that we can let them get going with what they need to do.
Well, we're, I'm sorry that this has all come about by another issue, which we were really not in control of, but I really appreciate the fact that you all were dedicated enough to what you're doing and I can see that by your demeanor here tonight, that I'm just glad that it has, we're able at least to get to this point so that we can then bring it to fruition hopefully for you and settle all of those issues and get everything headed in the right direction.
Well, thank you. And we're willing to do what we can to get it done. And we've never made a secret of anything we've done. It's been all over social media and, you know, we've always, we've had the newspaper do a couple stories and magazines and it's always been out there. And I will say, and please don't take this the wrong way, this has brought us more notoriety. This whole deal has brought a lot of attention to what we do and for that, I am thankful.
Good. I understand we have people that may be virtual that would like to speak. Do we have anyone virtually that would speak in support of this item? Please give us your name and address for the record and we'll allow you to speak at this time.
My name's Michelle Sampson, 6255 River Rouge Drive in Douglasville. Around seven years ago, my family became involved with Exodus Ranch and I could never imagine the journey that God has set us on with the ranch. I know that by now you've heard a lot about how the ranch, what the, how much the ranch does for foster kids, special needs individuals, at-risk kids, rehabilitating adults, the elderly, and the community in general. My family's involved in most, most of these programs and ministry. I'm a mentor for foster kids. We work all of the foster fund days. We help when we have special needs folks join us at the ranch. And I teach, teach writing lessons to both special needs individuals and normal kids. The quiet peacefulness and sanctity of the ranch are so very important for all of these kids and for me. What I'd like to speak about today is the effect that the ranch has and has had on these regular kids. Kids with few obvious home issues and no discernible learning or physical challenges. They may excel in school, be quite social, be active in sports, and generally function as we expect for their age. These kids need what the ranch has, the ranch offers as well. They feel the intense pressure of this world and of our society. They hear and feel the political strife and tension. They know that our country, even our county, is divided. What do these kids get from the ranch? Some might see them riding at the ranch and believe that they are just really fortunate kids who get the privilege of riding, and they might be right. But most of these kids work like you wouldn't believe. Yes, they have their normal chores at home and schoolwork, but they also muck stalls, clean tack, exercise horses, feed horses, fill feed buckets, organize tack equipment, groom horses, and many other jobs. They learn how to handle a 1,000-pound animal that has a mind of its own. They learn to put that animal before their own needs or desires. They learn work ethic and they learn that the work has to be done in the rain, the cold, the mud, or the heat. They learn how fractions are used in the real world while filling buckets with a half a scoop of one feed and a quarter scoop of the other. Aside from the work ethic and the math skills, these kids are learning compassion, acceptance, tolerance, and patience, working around the horses and the other very special people who are in the ranch ministers. They learn kindness and learn to exemplify kindness to others. They learn about the challenges that kids in the foster system face and what a huge encouragement that we can be that, when those kids enter our lives. They learn forgiveness as they witness a horse forgive a multitude of errors as the child, the kids learn to ride. They learn that it's not all about them. They learn that there's a bigger purpose, a bigger mission in the world for them. There's so much more that they learn. And if you want to know more about it, I encourage you to witness it yourself. I'll be glad to talk for hours on end what my teenager's gotten out of her experience at the ranch, for example. Exodus Ranch gives every kid respite. They can focus on animals. They can focus on the work that must be done. They can focus on their own goals. They can talk to the horses because the horses don't tell anyone their secrets. I encourage you to allow Exodus to continue the very important work that's being done there with all the kids, foster kids, special needs kids, the elderly, at-risk kids, adults, and us, regular folks. Without programs like the ones that Exodus has, our community loses. Thank you for allowing me to vocalize my comments.
Thank you very much. Who else would speak in favor? Please identify yourself, name and address for the record, virtually, and then we'll come back to you, ma'am. Anyone else virtually would speak in support? Okay, if there are others that would like to come and speak on this, how much time do we have left, Ms. Acker?
We've only used about four minutes.
Come right up, ma'am. If you give us your name and address for the record, we'd love to hear from you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for taking time to listen. Obviously, I'm the...
Name it, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Sorry. Kim Harrison, 7782 Cynthia Court, Douglasville, 30134. I apologize. I'm the geriatric one we were talking about. Obviously, I'm a little older than the kids, but I've taken advantage of the programs at the ranch. To be honest with you, Douglasville offers nothing for adults or children with physical special needs out here. If there's anything I want to do sport-wise or outdoors, I have to drive into Atlanta. And I would like to see our, our city turn more into home and not brick and mortar and start thinking about our future. Obviously, as someone in their, is late, 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 late 50s, I take advantage of the programs at the ranch. We did a weekend there and I was the only wheelchair user and we both learned a lot. I was horseback riding on the water slides. I was doing everything everybody else at the ranch was doing. It takes a lot to learn and take time, figure out how to get an adult with a disability up on a horse, but I was able to do it. And I spent the whole weekend with, with 10, this is before the pandemic, 10 other women and we camped out. And it was, it was amazing to be able to do something so close to home that I could just go right over the bridge. I'm at home and I could come back in the morning. And I would like, I'd just like to reemphasize that as our community starts aging out, we're going to have to start thinking about, about the kids with special needs as they get older. They're going to be like me soon and have to drive into Atlanta when we have a beautiful community here that we should take advantage of what we have. The ranch is very peaceful. It's tranquil and you would never know it's off of High 20. It's that quiet. And you get a sense of, you feel like you're out camping, but you just went over the bridge. We're right there. So I do want you to know that it's not just the kids. It's everybody in the community that can take advantage of the programs the ranch offers. And I would like to thank you from the bottom of my heart that I don't have to drive into Atlanta anymore to one to two things, that we do have a home here. And I know we, we run our city as a business, but we got to think about our hearts too and our family. And this is what we really need to do. So I take, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that would speak in support of the item, please come forward? Seeing none, then we would ask if there would be anyone that would speak against the item? Is there anyone virtual, the city manager that you know of? Know one virtually? I don't see anyone in opposition. So we will close this portion of the public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments that Madam Mayor or Council may have of the applicant? Did the applicant have anything else to say? It's not mandatory. I'm just asking if you had any other further comments?
Thank y'all for taking the time and appreciating what we do. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Then we'll come back to this on Monday night and take a vote and make a decision on that item. Item B, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider a Request for a Change in Zoning from PUD Plan Unit Development to LI Light Industrial District in the Quality Growth Development Overlay District for 22.17 acres at 1330, 1340, and 1346 Mount Vernon Road, Land Lot 715, District 18, Section 2, Parcells 5, 8, and 15. Application by LBA Realty, care of Doug Dillard. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The applicant requests a rezoning under the City of Douglasville Unified Development Ordinance, Section 12.08.05. The applicant's narrative states that the purpose of this request is to develop a warehouse distribution center. The preliminary site plan provided by the applicant shows a relatively small warehouse facility totaling 300,000 square feet. The proposed warehouse will have 329 parking spaces and 54 trailer spaces. The warehouse will, will be less than 40% of the entire property and 25% of the property will be a landscape area. The subject property consists of three separate parcels located within the Quality Growth Development Overlay District and two single-family homes on the property. The applicant's request of the rezoning and the proposed warehouse development are consistent with the purpose and the intent of UDO. While the rezoning will further the purpose of the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan shows this parcel as part of a regional activity center character area. The LI is not a recommended land use for the regional activity center. However, the proposed project does meet the underlying goal of a regional activity center, and that is to provide for areas that can support a high intensity of development which serves a regional market. If approved, this development must adhere to all requirements of the Quality Growth Development Overlay District.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I see the applicant is here. If the applicant representative would come forward, give us your name and address for the record and we'd love to hear your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Baxter Russell, attorney with Dillard Sellers, 1776 Peachtree Street Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia 30309. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, LBA Realty, presenting our request for a rezoning from PUD to LI Light Industrial in order to develop a 300,000-square-foot Class A warehouse and distribution center. Joining me tonight, I have Mr. Dave Bukett, Vice President with LBA, and Mr. John Wise, Partner with Paulson Mitchell. They'll be speaking shortly after me. Again, thank you for this, for your time this evening. I want to thank staff for their comments on the project and I'll be respectful of everyone's time and keep my comments brief. I believe there may be another member of the community who wants to speak in support on Zoom tonight, so we look forward to hearing from them as well. But I do want to say if there's any time remaining at the end, we'd like to reserve any of that extra time for rebuttal if necessary. So before I turn it over to Mr. Dave Bukett, I just want to reiterate, of course, we are here tonight requesting approval of our light industrial application. In evaluating this request, I want to highlight a few important points and overarching reasons that our request should be granted. First, as a land use request itself, the zoning category, consider our requested light industrial land use and the predominant industrial land uses in the surrounding area. LBA's light industrial zoning request and proposed warehouse use is consistent with the zoning and uses on many parcels in the area. The proposed development will serve as an in-cap industrial development at the western edge of the high-intensity warehouse corridor that is Blair's Bridge Road and Lynch Road. Second, consider this applicant and this developer who wants to be a good neighbor and who is amenable to area concerns. Consider the work that LBA and its design team have done to already alleviate potential negative impacts on surrounding properties. We understand the concerns related to our proposed development, primarily truck traffic and the property's frontage on Mount Vernon Road. As John will soon explain, this is, the site and the building itself were designed so that truck traffic and the industrial components will be against the abutting industrial property to our east and will be focused on Lynch Road and industrial road. Additionally, we are providing extensive buffering and screening along Mount Vernon, compliant with and even greater than the screening requirements of... compliant with and even greater than the screening requirements of the overlay district. The applicant wants to be a good neighbor and has designed the site to accomplish that. So in summary, we ask that you follow the recommendation of your professional planning staff and approve this request. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Dave Bukett, but again, we're happy to answer any questions that you have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Dave Bukett. I work for LBA Logistics. Address is 353 North Clark Street, Chicago, Illinois, 60654. Again, thank you for your time this evening and letting us present. We definitely, as Baxter iterated and John will detail technically, want to be a good neighbor. Our focus on, on this property is to, A, try to screen, work to screen the frontage along Mount Vernon Road to have a minimal impact to the neighbors, and also to, as, as Baxter noted, keep truck traffic to the rear against and towards the Staples Center to the north. That's it. I'm going to turn it over to John, who will do a much better job articulating the technical stuff, but again, thank you very much.
Hey, good evening. I'm John Wise, 85A Mill Street, Roswell, Georgia. I'm a partner at Paulson Mitchell. We worked on the site plan layout, and we will also be the civil engineer on the project if it moves forward. Just as a quick overview, kind of went over some of this, but 300,000-square-foot warehouse use building, 329 auto parks, that we reduced to 300 since the last meeting, and that's what's required per code. Less could be better for the site and use, but to actually meet the code per the city, it has to be at least 300, 300 auto parks and 54 trailer spaces on the, the backside of the building, close to the Staples Industrial Facility. Building coverage is going to be less than 40% of the site area, and the landscape area is greater than 25%, which makes the quality growth overlay. Just kind of want to walk through the site, just briefly with you, just to point out some items, but on the north side of the site, which is the Lynch Road site, that is where the truck entrance will be for, for the site and for all the truck, truck movements. The road there sits between being even with the finished floor of the building to 30 feet above the finished floor of the building. Along this area, we're going to provide a landscape buffer that matches the Mount Vernon buffer that I will explain further in a second. On the east side, that's the truck court side of the site. Like they said before, that's the industrial corridor right behind it, so that's going to match all the use of the east side of the site with the Staples Industrial and the further, further buildings down east of Lynch Road. All truck traffic and maneuvering, the dock doors and parking will be on that side, which is away from the residential that's on the west side of the site. The, this helps keep that truck traffic completely separate, and truck movement, the noise and any lights and all will be on the industrial side, not the residential side of the property of the area. On the south side, the building is situated between 170, 200 feet from the property line. Within this area is a 50-foot undisturbed buffer with natural vegetation and it's wooded. And outside of that 50-foot buffer, between the buffer and the building, is a detention pond facility. And on the south side, all of the existing water basin runs, stormwater runs to the south side of this site. So having this detention pond fully engulfed on this south side is positive, as it's going to catch any stormwater from the site has to go through that pond. There's not going to be any runoff that sneaks around on one side or the other. It's got to come south just by the existing basins and by the proposed basins as well. So that helps alleviate any environmental concerns south of the project. And on the west side is the office use side of the building, and that's what's facing Mount Vernon, which I think, yeah, we've shown a potential. This is just a example of the type of building that LBA produces. Obviously, a Class A, nice building with a good facade on the front. It's not just a concrete block warehouse building. This, on the west side, the auto parking is 50 feet from the property line, creating a nicest regular buffer in itself, and the building will sit approximately 180 feet plus or minus from the property line. There's a, we're proposing a 35 to 40-foot landscape buffer area, which I want to kind of go further into. So the main, the main concerns, as we've been through this process, has been for the truck traffic, the auto traffic in the landscape area. For the truck traffic, which I've kind of already alleviated to, we're utilizing only Lynch Road for our truck traffic to match the existing uses in that area. And to help with this, we're going to use traffic control devices to make sure we have a left-in, right-out only. So trucks can't come up, take a left on Lynch. They're going to have to go right on Lynch. And then we're also proposing a left-turn-in lane so that they know that they need to turn left on Lynch, and we want to provide signage as well. So, I'm sorry, left into the site off of Lynch, not turn left on Lynch. So, and all the signs will be showing turn right coming out of the site on the Lynch as well. The auto traffic was another mention that came up, another concern on Mount Vernon. What we're going to do to help alleviate this is provide deceleration lanes. That's not shown on this rendering here, but you'd have a decel lane at driveway, which we have as two there and as three on the screen. Do y'all see the same screen I see?
We have it on our tablet.
Okay. So at two and three, you would have decel lanes along Mount Vernon to help any traffic coming to our building get off Mount Vernon as quickly as possible and be in a long deceleration lane leading into the site, helping alleviate any traffic concerns. As far as the landscape buffering, what we've shown here to help kind of illustrate what we're proposing, per the quality growth overlay, we have to provide a 25-foot landscape buffer with specific tree specimen counts and different caliber trees. The applicant is wanting to enhance this by making it between 35 and 40 feet of his site right next to the property line of Mount Vernon, and also add more trees, different species, and possibly larger trees than what's required per the quality growth overlay. And what I kind of wanted to walk through is the different elevations on this site. Within this proposed buffer, we're going to have a 10, or we're proposing a 10-foot-high berm coming off of our property line. This berm will be planted. It'll have a four, five-foot wide top and then come down, and so it'll be 10-foot-high, if you can imagine, with all trees, good quality trees and different species of trees to help with any kind of environmental, or say a bug gets in the buffer, it won't kill all the trees, right? It'll be better maintained that way. What I kind of wanted to walk through as well with this buffer, so keep in mind, it's already 10-foot above the road itself, but on the view one here, the, which is the Lynch Road intersection, the road itself sits about 12 feet below our finished floor. So you're 12 feet below, and then you have the berm, and then you have the building, which is 180 feet from the property line, helping to alleviate any kind of, any kind of view issue. View two there is at Duane Lane. So there, you're kind of level with the building finished floor as how it's set. So this 10-foot buffer is going to help provide that screening just in a buffer, and then with the trees and the understory trees, the canopy trees and the shrubs within that buffer itself. View three is a, oh, sorry. View three is Jenny Lane, and that sits eight foot below the finished floor. So you'd have eight feet, 10 feet with trees and then the, the rest of the site. And then finally, view four is the very south side as you come up Mount Vernon, as shown here on the bottom right of the site plan. So this view, the road actually sits 30 feet below the finished floor. So if you're riding down Mount Vernon, you're going to have an existing slope of 30 feet, and then a 10-foot berm with brand-new trees, canopies, understories along this berm, and then 180 feet to the building at the finished floor. So in effect, it's 40 feet of difference. I apologize. So I think I'm going to leave it at that for Baxter can come back up, and then we're, we're here to ask and answer any questions you may have. Hopefully, we've provided some visuals that help kind of see how the site lays out, to help show that we're alleviating any sightline issues that we possibly can, and we'll be, we'd love to have a rebuttal for any questions or concerns that come up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, Madam Mayor, do you have any questions for the applicant before we go to individuals?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for presenting, and I did have a couple of questions. Did we have a DRI or anything from ARC about traffic?
It's not even asked, and as far as traffic, we don't have any contact or DRI.
Okay. So looking at our planning commission, there were, those were some of the issues that were addressed on their notes, was in correlation regards, regards to traffic. So I was just wondering if we didn't have a study. And then for retention ponds, detention ponds, and you were talking about maybe the impact from EPA, did, have you all checked with Water and Sewer Authority for Douglasville, Douglas County, or you're not at that point yet?
So we've done, can I just talk?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we've done preliminary talks with them, and we've done a few buildings in Douglasville, so we know how y'all's preliminary, or y'all's stormwater code works. And what I was trying to explain, which I know is kind of hard to explain, but all of the existing water goes from Lynch Road to the south. So what we're proposing is a really large pond on that south side that'll help alleviate any, obviously, any runoff from our site. Our impervious has to get caught in our catch basins and go to our stormwater pond. But it'll also help with any additional runoff that we can try to trap within that pond as well, because it is oversized. So we're trying to help alleviate anything coming past our pond. The way detention ponds work and the way we'll have to provide this is we cannot provide a faster or more volume discharge from our pond that was, than what's already there. So the amount of water coming off the site will not increase or decrease because we're not allowed to let it. It goes, go ahead.
Okay. I was just thinking about the impervious surface and how much more-
That's right, yes. So, so if you didn't have any ponds, like how they used to build things, right, you would just have your impervious surface, which speeds up the water, which has, you know, issues with the water.
Debris and all.
Yeah, debris, all kind of runoff. It would just go off the site back in the day, right? Now we have to provide these large stormwater ponds, so all your water drains into, you know, catch bases that you see on the ground, into pipes. All the pipes come into this pond, and then it sits in that pond, which allows the sediment that you have, say you have oil and grit in your water, right? It allows it to settle down into the bottom of the pond and then naturally filtrate in the, in the groundwater right out of the pond.
Yes, sir.
Right? And then all the water comes out of your pond and goes south.
Yeah, to Chattahoochee or Dog River, whatever. Okay. And then the other thing was the buffers that you talked about. You were saying that 40% of your project, that your project will only take up 40% of the entire land use, and that all the buffers, and you gave all the elevations of different buffers and from various sides, that the sightline, when someone is driving up the road, they're not going to be able to really see that it is an industrial building, but based on your schematic drawings, that it'll kind of look like office space? I guess it isn't just like a brick and mortar building, so with glass and different materials that the sightline, it wouldn't look like a, just a block of a-
Yes. What, and what they do is-
Storage facility.
Kind of in their examples, well, they, you know, not only is it glass, different colors, high-quality materials, but they also have offsets and offsets on the building, which goes a long ways into how your eyes see a building. If it's just a flat concrete block space, it's not pretty, right? So those, those kind of effects also make the building look better with shadows and all as well.
Okay. I don't mean monopolize the conversation, I just had those couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for-
No problem.
Oh, yes, sir.
I just wanted to add one thing, coming on what staff said, just about the traffic.
Yes, sir.
Under both the city's regulations and the regional commission's regulations, this building's actually too small to, to require us to do a full traffic study. What we have done that's in your, that was in our application packet and that's in your materials, is we have a trip generation report that does some comparison between how much traffic we're going to generate based on standard warehouse models compared with what could be developed here under the current zoning. That traffic also, the traffic report also looked at some of the driveway issues that John's already discussed, but I just wanted to highlight that, that because the building is actually, I, I know 300,000 square feet sounds large, and that is a large building, but for warehouses, it's, it's not big enough to require us to do a full traffic study.
Now, didn't you have residences there as well, like two residents or something?
At the planning commission meeting?
Yes, sir. I mean, two on this site, or no?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yes.
Two existing homes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what, are those going to stay there, or?
No, ma'am.
They're going to be gone, okay, because I was going to say that would be mixed up with having trucks and, and cars at the same time. All right. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Others? Mr. Mayor, pro tem?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll start asking about, pick up from where the, the mayor was talking about the detention ponds, and you mentioned that the site runoff is heads toward the south, which I reviewed the topographic maps of that area, and obviously, you're correct, they do run, water runs directly in that vicinity. What you don't point out, though, is the next southernmost thing is Sparks Reservoir in Sweetwater Creek State Park. You mentioned it's not an evapor, these are not evaporative detention ponds, they're filtered, filtration ponds. So the water is eventually going to leave those ponds, and it's going to go somewhere, and there is a swale that leaves, goes behind your property and then goes directly into Sparks Reservoir. So the water is going to go in, ultimately, will end up in the reservoir. Your, your, your location here is literally on the doorstep of one of the most popular state parks in Georgia, Sweetwater Creek State Park. And I understand, I appreciate what you've said and what you're trying to do in terms of ameliorating a lot of the impact, the parent impact of the development with the view sheds and truck traffic and so forth. My concerns, though, would be that, looking at your, first of all, looking at the sections that you've got drawn on the first sheet of your presentation, you're showing sections of the road up through the building. And what you're not being very fair about, and you're showing, is that you've got a compressed horizontal scale on those sections. So what it looks like is that, that berm has, has a greater effect on the view shed than it really does. That, the length, so those who aren't following what I'm saying is that that section's not drawn accurately. It's actually, it's not showing you the actual relationship between the highway and the, and the, and the building. The other concern I would have, as you mentioned about, you know, the, the care you're going to take in terms of, with the berms and the plantings, the concern I would have is what happens over time with that. I mean, you're not, trees fall down, they get hit by lightning over time. How much of that view shed is going to continue to be blocked by the vegetation over time? And then 10 to 20 years from now, how many of those trees are still going to be there? That's a concern I have. You talked about this being, you're trying to be a good neighbor, and, you know, you want to, you, you come to, you're coming to us asking for a rezoning. If you look at the, if you look at the zoning map that the city has prepared for that area, you've got along Lynch Road, you've got PUD on one end, PUD on the other, and then Light Industrial in the center. So it's like a sandwich there. I'm just going to read very briefly from what, PUD, this is from our own zoning ordinance, our own UDO, which describes what a PUD zoning area is supposed to, to create for a city. It's anticipated that a pattern of creative innovative neighborhood development, including residential neighborhood commercial, will be developed that is distinguished from other residential zoning districts through a diversity of lot sizes, housing types, and sizes to accommodate persons of a variety of stages of life and pedestrian-oriented setting that is well-integrated with the city's neighborhoods, parks, civic spaces, and supportive services. If you think about what I just described, you know, you got the sandwich of zoning there, the PUD on one end and one on each, those two sections were designed to ameliorate the impact of the industrial development in the, in the middle, which you're proposing is extending the industrial development all the way to the end. So getting, getting rid of the one side of the PUD, which is meant there to try to, to invoke some sort of neighborhood-type development in that area. Your development is not going to do- Your development is not gonna do that. I don't think, I don't typically think of a 300,000-square-foot warehouse as really being neighborhood-oriented. Maybe other people do, I don't know. And that being said, I'm also a little concerned about your rendering that you show, what's showing up on our sheet number five. It's not a bad design, I'll give you credit for that. It's got, I'll quibble over some of the minor details and fenestration, but that's not bad. But it's also not drawn accurately. It appears to me that you've only got about half the building drawn there. This is a 1,000-foot-long building.
That's just an example, yes.
Yeah, that, what you're showing there couldn't be more than 300, 400 feet. So, that's a portion of the building. You're not really showing the true impact of the scale of that building in that rendering. So, I think you need to be a little more clear, a little more clarity on that. So, that's, I guess that's really kinda sums up my, most of my concerns, but I think the biggest concern I really do have is the fact that, you know, you're asking to develop something of this scale, literally, literally on the doorstep of one of the most popular state parks, and then one that I think pretty much everybody in this room has used at one point or another and loves and enjoys. So, you're gonna have a big impact. Mr. Chair, that's all, thank you.
Sure. Other comments? Questions?
Can we clear a couple things? I don't know how to.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to explain the ponds just a little bit more for that. We do, what we design, you have a different, you have a lot of different ponds that you can design for the Blue Book of Georgia, but what we usually use is called a wet extended detention pond. So, the way it works is you have an area that's right at your outlet, or outlets in this case, that is constantly four foot below the outlet of the, of the pond itself. So, all the thought of it is, and the theory is, that all your sediment goes to that area, and then it sits, and then it really never comes out of the pond because it's gotta come up four feet to go out.
It's like a P-trap is basically what it is.
Yeah, it's a lot like a P-trap, in a sense. So, all your main sediment goes to that area, just to clear that up. And this rendering too, it was just an example to show the niceness of the building. It wasn't meant to say this is the building we're building, it was just to show the niceness.
Yeah, let me, yeah, we're not trying to be disingenuous, this is just a stock, kind of, another building that we've done, so that intention was not to show a partial building.
Well, I would assume that you would understand that you would have to go through the development process if approved, and get the development plans and renderings and colors and facades and materials approved through the development process, which is another step, should you, should you pass this one, okay?
Yeah, and we will work with staff to ensure that.
Sure.
Secondly, as far as the question regarding landscape maintenance, we are, we are a national owner, we keep these properties in our portfolio, we don't develop and sell. So, we do take a pride of ownership and making sure that we maintain our properties in a Class A manner. Thank you.
Sure. Any other comment?
One last thing.
You're using time, go ahead.
Thank you. If I could just comment, Mayor Protem, on what you had to say about the current zoning of this property? Absolutely appreciate that comment and understand what you mean about where this property's located. I can't comment on the history of why these three parcels are zoned PUD, but what I can tell by the history of it and the amount of time and my client's interest is that PUD hasn't worked for this property, because that's why they're here. And that's largely, I think in part, because of the industrial zoning that backs right up to us, because it's difficult to develop this property as something other than industrial that's next door. Thank you.
Okay. Is there other comment here? Coach, I believe you had a question or comment?
So, this property will border or run right up against the edge of Sweetwater Park, or is there something between y'all and the park, and so?
There's a few, I wanna say maybe three or four parcels along our southern boundary line that bump up against the actual border, I believe, of the park. We are, we are close to the border of the park, but we're not right up against it, I believe.
Have y'all had any contact with the, that subdivision, if, for lack of a better term, that's basically right across the street from y'all's proposed site?
Some of those neighbors spoke at the Planning Commission hearing, one in person, and then I believe there were three or four that spoke over Zoom during that hearing. We have not had the opportunity to meet with them. We would love that opportunity. Our contact information, if anyone is here or listening, is available from staff, or if you, you have my address from watching the video, but we're happy to reach out and talk further about that berm and that landscaping buffer that we're proposing right up against them.
I do like the left-in, right-out-only aspect of what you're proposing. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
Thank you. Other council members have any question or comment of the applicant before I go virtual? Mr. Justice, did you have a comment?
I've had a couple of conversations about this with Mr. Russell in particular previously, and in isolation, I have no issue with this. I will be curious to see what kind of response we get from the neighboring citizens here tonight and Monday. But my biggest concern that, that I was unaware of during our previous conversations is, and I do appreciate what you have done to, in response to the concerns of the community, but I was unaware at the time, intentionally somewhat, because I tried to be, look at this very cold initially, but since then, to find out how the proximity to the park is a concern to me. I'm not saying it's insurmountable. So, I'm really, really torn on this right now.
Would it be a fair request of staff possibly between now and Monday to have us with an area map that would show some of those distances and property lines?
It would help me, certainly. And I also intend to go drive over and take a look in person, but I just wanted to make you all aware of some additional concerns that I have, that I did not have when we spoke previously. And I also look forward to hearing any comments from, from other council people and from citizens who may be online.
That's our next move.
If you look at Sheet 54 on our submission, there's an area map that gives you kind of a rough idea of how close it is to the park.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that. I wanna go forward with anyone that may be here in person, first of all, to speak concerning this, either for or against this item. If there are anyone who is here that would like to do that, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. And if there is no one here to speak for or against in person, then we'll go to our speakers virtually. And if you are here in person, please come forward. How are you, sir? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mehho Tepic Jenny Lane 1880 Jenny Lane, Littia Spring. I'm on the corner here between Jenny Lane and Mount Vernon. All our subdivision is against that building, you know. I came tonight because last time I couldn't make it. And all neighborhood is against this building. Tonight, I heard about that beautiful building, but I think it's very bad solution for that building and wrong place. And also, thank you, you recommended good question tonight. I will take, just because I'm engineer so many years. Now, because I'm directly on the enters, two enters here on the, between two enters is just maybe 200 yards, and that street we killed. Already, right now, is huge problem from this subdivision to come in that Mount Vernon. When you see right now, one, two, three, four stops that will be on the 500 yards, I'm glad tonight you put that question on the table, because you know what you have to do it. But I don't know why they did not to put around that building even road for.
Sir, sir, speak, speak to us. Speak to us, please.
Road around that building for fire strike. They could to make it one enters for that parking lot for small car from this one enters. They killed two streets. I don't know why they did that. And I will leave that question for people who knows better job than me, you know. I apologize for my language.
No, sir.
Be understanding.
No, sir.
I'm so upset because over 20 years, I'm across the street on that address, my heart is not good, and I apologize tonight for.
No, sir. You don't owe us an apology, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You're welcome. Can we, Mr. Chairman, say something about that the interest is probably based on the way the city has for parking?
I would assume that, and I'm going to assume this just to make this comment, it's probably a good thing as far as design of the building is concerned, that you do not have a street that is accessible all the way around the building because of the truck traffic, in order to try to minimize that. I believe that's what the applicant is doing. However, you do have access on all four sides for an emergency vehicle to approach, and I'm assuming that's what their design was for, but I'm getting a head nod of a yes to that.
Yeah, that'll probably mitigate some of the issues with having.
Mitigate traffic issues, that is correct.
And one way out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else here in person that would like to speak either for or against the issue? I'm gonna move along then, and we are going to hear from several people virtually. We will take those in the order that I have them here in support of. Our city manager's been so gracious as to provide me with names. So, Dale Parrish, are you on the line? Dale Parrish? All right, I'll move on then, and we'll come back to them. Sid Howman?
I'm on now.
Mr. Howman, would you give us your name and address?
Sid, let me, I messed up on the online thing. Well, Sid works with us, so he was just here for technical support.
Okay, so we don't need to call on him. Sorry, Mr. Sid Howman, you're not gonna be called on, I'm sorry. Okay. Dale Parrish, would you give us your name and address for the record, please? And?
Dale Parrish, 4 Talabusa Street, Temple, Georgia, 30179. Thank you, Madam Chairman and Council, for listening. My wife Lynn and her sister Susan and Kathy have this property, and it has been in our family for quite a while. And we are very much in favor of this. It's just the best plan that we think could be there, since the other buildings are right on the other side of us, and we are very much in support of this plan. And thank you for hearing us. I would be there tonight, but I had a knee replacement yesterday, but I would be there. But I truly thank you for listening.
I think you'd be respectfully able to be excused, Mr. Parrish. We wish you the best, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, how you doing?
Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Nguyen.
I'm Michael Nguyen, 1330 Mount Vernon Road.
Give us your comments, please, sir.
As I said, this is the address, which is up for debate at this particular time. Our house or our property is located on that corner of Lynch Road and Mount Vernon Road, and to be able to see the schematic of what LBA Realty is looking to do with this particular location and area, I'm definitely in full support of it. Just the description that they were able to give about the portion of the building that you would be able to see from the Mount Vernon Road side, it does continue to add beautification to that particular side of the street where it's residential. Just being a resident of this, of this area for the past eight years, I can definitely say that the houses on the other side of Mount Vernon Road are definitely beautiful houses, definitely a beautiful subdivision and neighborhood. So, I definitely understand their side of it, but I also wanna be able to be in support of what LBA is doing, because that is going to help with the beautification of that particular side of the street. And also, just with the understanding of what they're doing on the Lynch Road side, if you've, if you've driven on Lynch Road before, it's the bypass street to Blair's Bridge Road off of Thornton Road. And Thornton Road, I mean, Blair's Bridge Road from Thornton is all industrial, from the racetrack to the hotels, to the car dealers, I think Nissan, or Toyota is across the street from the racetrack. You continue to go down, you have a paintball facility, and you have other warehouses and industrial buildings. You have the Werner Truck Training Facility site that's just beyond that, and then you have, then you have the light where you have Lynch Road. And at Lynch Road, you have more warehouses like Staples, and I think Bang Energy Drink has now taken one of the buildings in that particular area as well. And then, if you looked at the, the top half of where the Lynch, Lynch Road entrance is, that part of the property is already being used industrially. There's already trucks parked on that particular part of the property that does irrigation and things of that nature. So, that particular side of Lynch Road already looks like the plans of the backside of the proposed warehouse, where all of the trucks and the trailers and things of that nature would already be. So, that would not take away from the beautification of the neighborhood, it would just, it would actually look just like the rest of the street that it, that already is industrious to start with. So, I just wanted to reiterate that I am a resident on this particular property right now, and just being able to see the plans, I am in support of what LBA Realty is looking to do. And hopefully, it can be a change of heart as far as the residents are concerned. Eventually, I would believe if this doesn't go through, there's just gonna be more businesses or more proposals or propositions to come through, and eventually, somebody's gonna end up doing something like this on this particular corner. But I do appreciate, as they said before, they're looking to be a good neighbor, and I believe that they've done so with that. And the fact that it looks like it's creating more jobs in this particular area as well, and I'm definitely an advocate for that.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Maggie Nguyen?
Good evening. My name is Maggie Nguyen at 1330 Mount Vernon Road. I am in support of LBA Realty. I personally had questions myself about the validity of what they were doing at, at one particular time. We've had many offers on these properties before, but the, the reason why we had a change of heart is because we saw, we had conversations with them, we talked to them, we were, we had questions about the traffic, where were the trucks gonna be, how would it affect our neighbors? And they assured us that they would do everything possible to, again, be a good neighbor. So, and the beautification of the property, they assured us of the boundaries and how much further back from the streets they were gonna be able to build their warehouse. So, that is the reason why. So that is the reason why the agreement, we are in agreement with them on this matter. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Those were the ones that we had, that Madam City Mayor has given me that were online to speak virtually in support. We will now go to those that would speak in opposition, and I have several names here. Is Matthew Keaton on the line? If so, I need your name and address for the record, and we welcome your comments. What about Deborah Landry? What about Stephen Landry? Or Perry White?
Yes, sir. This is Perry White. I live at 1885 Jenny Lane, which is actually right across the street from the entrance of the plan, so I get to look at the parking lot. First, I want to say I had obviously a couple of concerns about this and a number of different comments, and I appreciate the council thoroughly vetting this. There were some really, really great comments on it, and I had very similar comments on my own. Obviously, first of all, the issue for us, especially right across the street, is we're sure the property value is going to go down as soon as something gets on line industrial next to us. So obviously, we don't want that to happen. But like you said, one of the reasons I bought the house here was because of close proximity to Sweetwater State Park. And having this there is certainly not going to be conducive to all of our friends and neighbors going down their park and seeing this industrial building there. And I understand they've got the berm on there, and they've got these trees, and maybe they're even taller trees than the reason they talked about. Regarding deciduous trees, you know, what's it going to look like in the wintertime when all the leaves are gone? I mean, it's really hard to landscape something like that and keep it hidden without an actual fence. So great, the land takes nice in the springtime and the summertime, but then the fall and winter, it's all bare and you see the ugly buildings. So, you know, just want to bring that out point because it really wasn't mentioned at all in this. I do like to refute a couple of things again that said I was one of the spokespersons last time when we had the city council. And we actually went and voted to deny this in the planning zone, we didn't think that it's going to come to here. So that's why we didn't get quite as many people on this call because it was very last minute that it got here. So certainly, the Monday call, you'll have additional people joining in from our side of the road. So I apologize, we didn't all get here at this point in time. So first of all, Jenny Lane, if you've not driven down that road, right as you come into this intersection, where their same intersection is, there's a hill, okay? So when you're looking to the north of this, you really can't see anything. And so we've had several wrecks there from people coming over the hill, people trying to come out of that center. So really, that entrance number three is probably the worst place in the world to even put an entrance. I don't like coming out of the entrance, and I live there. So bad place for the entrance. And in fact, I've mentioned before in the previous thing, if they have both of their entrances on Lynch Road, it really wouldn't have much of an impact. But they didn't want to change that, so they've got both entrances there. So let's talk about their traffic and what they said, you know, their traffic study or their lack of traffic study. The original one you saw basically said there's only going to be a few people in here, it's not going to cause an impact on traffic. Again, they never explained if there's going to be a few people working there, why they need 329 parking spaces for personnel in there, okay? The Staples Building right next door, which is 30% bigger than this warehouse, has 30% fewer parking spaces, okay? So they don't really have a tenant plan for this now, so they really don't know what they're going to do. And so they're asking you to take a leap of faith and say, okay, we're going to be good no matter who we sell it to. And that's not going to happen, I don't believe. All right, so the truck entrances, they said they're going to make sure the truck entrances are on Lynch Road. And I explained this last time, that the trucks that are coming from the west are going to get off on Lee Road because it's shorter, they're going to take Lee Road, they're going to get off on Monier, and then they go down Mount Vernon because you can't turn left on Lynch Road from Monier Boulevard because it's too tight of a turn. You have to turn on Mount Vernon. That means you're going to have trucks sitting on Mount Vernon stopped, which causes traffic backup until they can actually turn. That wasn't mentioned before. And also, by the way, the, when they changed Lee Roads so you can't turn left, there's a lot more traffic that goes down Mount Vernon simply because you can't turn left on Lee Roads, you have to go down Mount Vernon to hit Lee Roads instead. So a lot more traffic than there used to be, and that's really not being taken into consideration here at all on Mount Vernon Road. So again, I mentioned before about the 329, they never mentioned anything else about it this time. They tried to explain some things about the truck traffic, but they didn't answer all the questions again. You talked about the ponds, which the property does slope a little bit south, which will go to Sweetwater State Park, but the rest of the property slopes east and comes straight down Lynch Road to the Mount Vernon Road. So a lot of the runoff is going to go down to the east as well because that's the way the property slopes. And again, someone else mentioned, what about the property? You know, I know they said, oh, yeah, we always take care of our property, we don't get rid of it, but there's no guarantee that they'll maintain the property in perpetuity. Once they've sold this, and once they've got their zoning, they can do whatever they want. I don't know what you can do to keep them from doing that, but certainly, I don't trust them because what they've said so far is not necessarily very truthful, not deceptive per se, but not telling the whole truth. And so that's why it's kind of bothering me about this whole process. They were opening up front about what they were trying to do and talked to the neighbors ahead of time to see what the problems were and how we could fix it. It would have been a different story, but that didn't happen. So we're stuck in this process now, we're trying to stop it.
Thank, Mr. Perry, your time has expired.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. I'll move back to see if Matthew Keaton has unmuted. Deborah Landry?
Yes, Stephen and Deborah Landry are here.
Okay, your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Stephen and Deborah Landry, address 1850 Jenny Lane, Lithia Springs, Georgia, 3022.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity to speak. I have two major concerns. The first is with safety for us residents that have the egress out of Jenny Lane and Duane Lane. The trip generation report that was placed online spoke about traffic only being increased by one vehicle operation per minute, I think it said. But the reality behind that is that that traffic count or that additional traffic is rarely spread out over a 24-hour period, and that's not realistic. What's realistic is that there will be shift work probably at this warehouse, and there will be concentrated periods of heavy traffic trying to get in and out of those 300 slots for the employee parking lot. And that will create a dangerous situation on a portion of road that's already dangerous. They spoke about deceleration lanes, which I assume is on their side of the property, but they didn't talk about, and that would be fine for traffic arriving from the south, but they didn't talk about any turning lanes being put in the center of the street for traffic arriving from the north. And if they did put turning lanes in the center of Mount Vernon, I'm sure that would eat up some of the property of those people that live right there, especially the first gentleman that spoke. So also concerned about why this cannot be designed for the egress and ingress of the employee parking on Lynch Road as well as the trucks. Understand that emergency vehicles need access to the entire facility, but my question would be, why can't there be an entrance that's designated only for emergency traffic for those circumstances, but then all that employee and truck traffic being on Lynch Road where it's supposed to be? My second point is also about the concerns about Sweetwater Creek Park. And sort of speaking for the residents that use that park, that don't even live in this area, my fear is that those 300 parking slots are going to be used as overflow parking on the weekends and holidays for people trying to get into Sweetwater Creek Park. I see it on a weekly basis that the traffic just builds up into the street with people trying to get into the park. And anybody that's been to the park can see that they've been putting up fences to reduce the parking space in the park itself. So I'm worried that those 300 slots will fill up with cars during the weekends and holidays. You know, if there's two people per car, then that's 600 people. Three people per car, that's 900 people. And all those people are going to be walking along Mount Vernon, there's no sidewalk. And those are going to be families with strollers, children hold by hands, dogs on leashes, and heaven forbid, just one child get away from one parent and wander into that street. That would just be a tragic situation. So extremely concerned about the traffic and the liability for that and what that's going to do. There's simply no sidewalks. I've got a pass to the park for parking that I pay for because I live at Jenny Lane, and I don't walk to the park because I don't consider Mount Vernon safe now, never mind an additional overflow parking area across from my street. Also, the petitioners made a comment about this being a good use of the property because the PUD property is simply not working out because no PUD interests want to move next to the industrial zoning part. I take a little offense to that because now they want to put the industrial zoning part closer to my home and make it so that I'm not comfortable with it. So I don't see the logic of that point saying that this is a better use of land. I just don't see that. And lastly, I'm just concerned about the being the good neighbor portion of this. And I would hope that a good neighbor would reach out to the people that live here and not require that the residents here have to reach out to them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Your time has just expired. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has come on virtually to speak, either for or against Madam City Mayor?
Mr. Keaton is having technical difficulties.
Is there anyone else virtually to speak? Okay, how much time do we have left? Ms. Vicki?
I've kind of lost track. I think it's probably about five minutes.
Okay. Someone has raised their hand in the audience if they would like to speak personally. I'll give that opportunity, and we have about five minutes remaining. Please come forward, sir. Give us your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear your comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Tuchet. I'm one of the property owners, business person here in Lithia Springs.
Michael, could we have your name, your address, please, sir?
Address is 2549 Slater Mill Road, and business is at 1955 Monier Avenue, Lithia I'm the owner of the 1340 Mount Vernon property, and I understand people's concerns. This property backs up to a warehouse, which makes it possible good usable use for additional warehouse here. The landscape plan that I'm seeing has a lot of good landscaping. The property that's on the corner, I myself have planted 150, 200 Leland Cypresses on that property that can probably be replanted and utilized, and a lot of extensive landscaping on there. That I took pride in what I did. I used to own the house on the corner, sold it, owned the six acres in the back. I manicured it, you could almost play golf out there in a sense. So had some horses for a little while and so on. This property, they wanted to do a housing development at one time, and it never got off the ground. So I don't know what more opportunities they're going to have with what's going to be coming up. Good possibility, maybe some good planning as far as taking the park into consideration. I don't see any sidewalks, like Mr. Landry said, I think, and possibly a bike lane as well to promote the park because I see a lot of traffic at the park, I see people parking on the road. And that would encourage people to use the park even more along with a walking trail and possibly help the people along with Jenny Lane that they could walk to the park instead of going through their backyard and cutting through the woods. So there's some advantages, and there's going to be disadvantages, but we would really appreciate if y'all would consider this project. And if there's anything that I can do to help, let me know.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll give the next five minutes then for rebuttal, and then we will close this public hearing out. Thank you all for your patience.
Yeah, thank you, neighbors and council for comments. A couple of things. One is the parking count, which is now at 300. We're more than happy to reduce that. That is actually code. That is actually City of Douglasville code. We need, we could reduce that easily by the first drive aisle and the next row of parking and still have adequate parking for this facility. So my proposal would be to work with staff to do a variance to reduce that and leave that space green space. The other thing we were just talking about doing, you know, kind of, is then also limiting access to Lynch Road. So we'd have to modify the entrance there as it's shown right now to then come down and serve the actual pedestrian or car parking. So we can do that, we would propose to have an emergency exit, probably where we're showing number three right now. You know, so I think those are kind of low-hanging fruit that we can do better to alleviate some of the concerns of the neighbors and just the surrounding community.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's, the one gentleman that had technical difficulties, I would, just out of courtesy, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I'm sorry. You go ahead, sir. Go ahead with your rebuttal.
No, just before, I'll say something quick and then turn it over to John. What Dave was talking about, the city's code has a process whereby we could submit for what's called an alternative parking plan. It's an administrative process, so that's what we would do here. We've got, with the 300 spaces that are required by code, as Dave said, we have more parking than we need. So we're happy to look into that, to talk to staff. We might need some time to put that together, but we're happy to look at that reduction. As Dave said, it would make, it would take the parking lot further away from Mount Vernon Road, further away from those homes, and allow more space for buffering space and landscaping space. Thank you.
Yeah, just one more thing. So on the landscaping, as this gentleman just mentioned, we could look at across from Lynch, across from 2000 Lynch, there's a lot of Leland Cypresses that he planted and some taller trees. We could look at incorporating those into our proposed plan as well. A lot of times, existing trees aren't actually in good health. They may look like it, but it'd be better to plant new ones. But if we have harvests on board, if they are in good health, we could look at trying to save those right at the frontage as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your rebuttal. I want to make sure that I give opportunity to Mr. Keaton, just in case he might now be on.
He's going to submit his comments in writing.
Okay, okay. Then is there any question or comment that anyone, council or madam mayor, may have? And I'll go to Ms. Miller first.
Thank you very much. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here and explaining your proposal. I do appreciate the effort that you guys have put in, especially with the buffer. We'll say my concerns would be, of course, with the state park being right there because that is something that I think not only as a community that we all love, but statewide, and I'm there a lot, and I see out-of-state tags, I see tons of people, families, dogs, children, so that, I know that is something that we definitely need to keep in mind. But also, the neighborhood that's right there across the street that people are talking about, as we were sitting here, I did get an email from one of the residents that is actually an email chain, and it must be all of the residents over there because it's a lot. I have not had a chance to read through all of it yet. And of course, you know, just now getting it, I haven't actually had a chance to speak with any of the residents. Actually, this afternoon, going from picking my son up from school and taking him to ball practice along with one of his friends, who is 15 years old, this child expressed his concerns to me with the traffic and that. concerns to me with the traffic and that hill right there. And that really, so when he told me that, I thought, oh, my goodness, I need to see when this is, what we can do and when we can speak with those residents. So I don't know if it's too late, but to maybe go back and speak with some of those residents and see if there is a common ground to meet in the middle, something that could possibly make it work for everyone. Because I know that there have been other projects in the past that would not work for the community as well. And, you know, I mean, this kind of late in the day is something that we'll have to maybe reach out to some of those residents and see what we could do before Monday and see if there's maybe some changes that we could make to make everyone happy. But, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Coach Watts, did you have a comment?
Just real quick, one of the concerns was about overflow weekend, people trying to get into the park. I can't imagine, I spend a lot of time over there, ridden my bike on that road. I can't imagine anybody parking where your proposed site would be and walking to the park entrance. But I have seen people hoofing it along that road, especially during the pandemic when the park was packed just about every day. So my question, or you don't have to answer it right now, but I don't know how you could prevent usage of that lot, other than for the businesses or offices that are there, but maybe just keep that in mind as you go forward, the possibility that that might be a draw for some folks.
Yeah, it's a really tough question to answer, to be honest with you. I mean, we, depending what the operator is that actually manages the building, and we can put up no parking signs, we can tow, you know, we can do these common things to try to discourage it. But that's pretty low-hanging fruit. Now, being able to guarantee that people won't park there when the businesses aren't operating, I mean, that's tough to say. But we can post and do our best.
Thank you, sir. Other comments or questions? I believe we have taken up the time that was allotted plus some for this public hearing. And so with that in mind, I appreciate the applicants coming forward and your information. I appreciate the comments that have been made, and hopefully, as Ms. Miller has mentioned and suggested, it needs to be something that's hashed out potentially between the neighborhood. And I think there have been some good comments made as to what the applicant is willing to do and willing to potentially make changes and try to answer some of those questions and improve on that situation. So we'll hear more on this on Monday. And I thank you all for your patience. Item C, hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for a personal services tattoo studio and body piercing only on a properties on PUD planned unit development based on G.C. General Commercial being approximately 37.68 acres at 6700 Douglas Boulevard, Land Lot 23, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 94. Application by James Vincent. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The applicant requests a special land use permit under the following regulations of the City of Douglasville Unified Development Ordinance, Sections 2.02(c) allowed principal use table. The applicant is seeking a slot for a tattoo and body piercing parlor within an existing mall. The proposed use is allowed within a PUD zoning district with an approved slot. As noted in the memo dated December 15, 2020, the applicant has already signed a lease agreement with the Opera Place Mall. We came before mayor and council in December requesting a temporary business license to adhere to the zoning schedule and to give staff the opportunity to process the slot. So you all are somewhat familiar with this item. Again, we brought it to you in December. They had signed a lease, and so in conversations with you all, you were comfortable in giving them a temporary business license until they could come before you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is the applicant here to speak?
They're virtual. They're on the call right now.
All right. Then we would request that the applicant give us your name and address for the record. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience, and we look forward to hearing your comments.
Hi, I am Dr. Sharon Evans. My address is 1657 Cambria Rock Drive, Greenville, North Carolina, 27834.
How are you this evening?
Well, how are you?
I'm great. Do you have information that you would like to provide to us concerning this? I know that we have heard from you in the past, and this has been worked through the process now, and I appreciate your patience. I know that this very possibly was something that you did not realize you would have to go through in order to open a business or become a part of the mall there. But is there information you'd like to provide? Any additional?
So I want to say thank you for the special permit, granting us permission to go ahead and get started and not continue to lose money on the lease agreement. And we are used to this process because most of our other tattoo shops are located within a mall. So we're used to getting a special use or a special permit with the various cities. So we certainly appreciate the opportunity to bring these services to the citizens of Douglasville, Georgia. We look forward to hiring some local residents as well, and so we'll start that hiring process for additional people. We've had two people that we relocated to that area. One is from Douglasville, who he was very excited about moving, and the others we will hire locally. But I'm just here in case you all have any questions or you need additional information from us.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor or Council, do you all have any additional questions for the applicant? Okay. Is there anyone here that would speak in favor of this application in person? Please come forward. Anyone that would speak in opposition to the application that may be here in person? Please come forward. I don't see any. Do we have anyone on virtual that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, and we will take this item up then on Monday. Thank you, ma'am, for your comments and for your application.
Thank you.
Move on to item D. That was too easy. Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of splitting into two lots for 20.13 acres at Blair's Bridge Road, Land Lot 616, District 8, Section 2, Parcel 2. Application by Native Development Group and East Group Properties LP. Ms. Patrice Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. This item actually goes with item E, so I'll make this one really quick. We do approve, we have a look at the plat, the attachments, along with everything else you have there, and staff does recommend approval for this plat.
Okay. The purpose of this, wanting to combine the two plats, I'm assuming, I see that there's a representative, obviously, here that I would like to hear from concerning that, and we'll see if there are any questions or comments. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Joe McGory, 910 Davis Bend, Alpharetta, Georgia.
You, sir.
Do you want me to talk about the whole project or just the?
Well, we'll ask for your, we'll ask for your information on the public hearing in a moment, so.
Okay.
Just your reason for wanting to split this.
To split the plat, to split the property, we're going to end up purchasing 15 acres, we hope, prospectively, and the seller wants to retain five acres to sell independently of this.
Okay.
Part of this, we don't, we don't need the whole property, and they want to try and get a certain dollar amount for the whole property, and they've held it a long time, so.
But they've asked you then to handle the splitting of it?
Yeah, that was part of our agreement, that we take care of the plating and pay for all those costs, so.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Or council? Any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Okay, we thank you for coming in, sir. We'll take that under consideration then for Monday. And I'm going to, Ms. Williams, any reason I can't move on to item E?
E, absolutely.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from G.C. General Commercial District to Light, LI, Light Industrial District in the Quality Growth Development Overlay for 15.059 acres on Blair's Bridge Road for a portion of Land Lot 616, District 18, Section 2, Parcel 2. Application by Native Development Group LLC and East Group Properties LP. Ms. Williams?
Okay. On October 19, 2020, an adjacent property was rezoned from General Commercial to Light Industrial to LI for a warehouse. The proposed rezoning would assist the development of this warehouse. Our previous application indicated a warehouse with a square footage of 118,000 square feet. The current proposed warehouse has an increase of 147,339 square feet. The item is in the Quality Growth Overlay District. The applicant's request that rezoning of the property to LI with the proposed warehouse development is consistent with the purpose and the intent of the UDO and the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. This being a public hearing, we need to give opportunity to the applicant to make his presentation, and then we will, we will have others come and speak either for or against if they're present or virtually. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Appreciate your time tonight. Again, my name is Joe McGory, 910 Davis Bend, Alpharetta, Georgia. I'm here tonight on behalf of Native Development Group and East Group Properties to present our rezoning request for a 15-acre site along Blair's Bridge Road. Last November, we rezoned two parcels, as Patrice said earlier, about nine and a half acres to Light Industrial to do 118,000 square foot warehouse distribution center. We also assembled a smaller site to the west of that, right along Sweetwater Creek, the Barsk Parcel, and that was to give us, to facilitate the access into the industrial at the time, to the left side of the building. This request is to rezone 15 acres to the, to the east of the formerly, of the other site that will provide an ability to add a second entrance to the, to the park. And I have some, we have a drawing we can show for that. It also allows to get some additional density. It'll be in the neighborhood of 147 to 150,000 square feet in total. And it also allows to achieve some floodplain compensation that we need for the property. Again, the total developed building expect to be about 147 to 150,000 square feet. The building itself will be of the highest quality in the Atlanta market and is comparable a lot of the recently developed buildings you've seen in the submarket. I want to thank you for your time and consideration of this rezoning request and look forward to working with the City of Doug, the City of Douglasville and answer any of your questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor?
No, sir.
Questions for the applicant?
No, sir. I just, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The planning commission looks like unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Council members, you have questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone here that would speak either for or against this application? And is there anyone here, anyone virtually online to speak for or against? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing. We will come back on Monday and take action on this, and we appreciate you being here, sir. Thank you for your patience. Item F, reappoint Mr. Phil Ren to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term expiring January 31, 2024. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. Mr. Phil Ren currently holds a position on the Historic Preservation Commission and would like to be reappointed for a three-year term expiring January 31, 2024. Staff recommends this. He's very responsive, and he loves being on the commission.
Well, I'm glad to hear he's willing to serve again. I'd hate to appoint him and he not be here and not want to be reappointed. He has no choice. Any questions or comments?
He's a great member.
Yes, he is. A great neighbor, a great member, a great friend. If there's no objection, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday night for his reappointment, so before he backs out, then we won't have to worry about that. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Moving on to the last item, consider a resolution to impose a moratorium on the acceptance of applications relating to the establishment or expansion of small box discount stores to define small box discount stores, to set an expiration date, and for other purposes. Ms. Woodward has talked with us in our committee meetings tonight about this, and so this is something that we need to consider on Monday. If we need to hear from her again, are there questions or comments? If you would like to hear Ms. Woodward's comments again, I think we probably should do that, this being our, our meeting portion and filmed and recorded portion. Ms. Woodward, do you have comments for us?
So just to briefly reiterate what has been discussed during the committee meeting, staff has proposed a resolution to impose a moratorium to put a pause on establishing new small box discount stores while city staff conduct more research on the subject. The proposed resolution defines, first of all, the proposed resolution sets the moratorium for 90 days and expires on June 13, 2021. And the resolution also defines small box discount stores as a retail store of 12,000 square feet or less in size that offers a variety of convenience shopping goods at mostly $10 or less per item, but does not include drug, stores that contain a pharmacy, stores that sell gasoline or fuel, or stores that primarily sell specialty food items. Mayor and council has previously also expressed that for the city staff when we're conducting the research, be sensitive to the fact that small box discount stores could be a relief to some of the communities within the city. And also, the council would like to see what the proximity between the small box discount stores are inside the city and with the ones that are close to the city limits. Staff is prepared to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Do we have further questions for council at this time? If so? You? Seeing none, I would say then that upon Monday, if we could have that information potentially as to answers to those questions that have been asked and concerns, I will not request that this be placed on the consent agenda so we can have further, further discussion before we vote. Thank you very much, Ms. Woodward. Madam Mayor, I know you're surprised, but that will complete, that will complete the items that we have tonight under planning and development. Thank you.
Happy to salute you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. You did a wonderful job. We'll move on to item 11, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
No business tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight. Item A, appoint Haley Chapman, digital media designer at the City of Douglasville's representative to serve a one-year term on the Board of Directors of the Cultural Arts Council of Douglasville, Douglas County. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. During your last round of meetings, you interviewed Ms. Haley Chapman. She represents, she'll be representing the city seat on the Board of Directors for the Cultural Arts Council.
Thank you. So anybody have any, anything since then? Any questions or comments? All right. Well, we appreciate her willingness to serve in this role, and we'll, if it's okay, place this on the consent agenda for Monday. And item B is appoint Patty Wensick to the post four position of the Douglasville Convention and Conference Center Authority to fill an unexpired term expiring June 1, 2024. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. During your committee's meeting at 5:00 PM, you interviewed Ms. Patty Wensick. She's the only individual interested in serving in the post four position of the Douglasville Convention and Conference Center Authority, and there is one other position that will need to be filled in upcoming weeks, but she's the only one for post four.
Well, the Douglasville Convention Conference Center is going to get a good one. And we appreciate her willingness to serve. And anybody have anything additional to add before we? Okay, and we'll place this also on the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. We'll move on to item number 15, which is Technology Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Lieutenant Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mercifully, we do not have any items at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Is there any other business to come before council tonight from council members?
He said no, really fast. I'm going, it's going to be very quick. I do have the governor, Governor Kemp's new executive order, which extends the availability for Georgians to have the COVID-19 vaccine as 55 and older and/or if you're less than 55, of course, if you have those triggers like asthma, diabetes, all of that. And so we should go online and schedule with Public Health. I wanted to ask the city manager, I know that Ms. Austin Bean was not here, I mean, she was here, but she was for committees. Did care here, are we able to provide that service to city employees?
She was going to follow up with the Board of Health, so I'll have more information on that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And then the warming station, which we're going into spring, we may not need it anymore, but the chief opened up our municipal community room in conjunction with Mr. but the chief opened up our municipal community room in conjunction with Mr. The county, I can't ever remember his name. What's his name?
Milholland?
Milholland, there you go. And Mr. Charles Brunson, that's not his last name. Branson, thank you. I've been here a long time to help for when it got a certain temperature. I think the county's time was, the chief and I talked about it, it was a different temperature and so the chief wanted to extend that out for when it got really cold or just, you know, and so they were going by picking people up and he's had some folks, they were provided some cots. In addition to some of the churches, he's opened up that facility for warming stations. So if we need people or have anyone that needs to go there, the chief has opened up that facility. I believe that's all. Do we have any announcements or anything from council members? No, then we'll move on to updates from city staff, our city attorney, Ms. Littlefield, since Mr. Dotson isn't here, you have anything?
No, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Short timer. Chief Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Woodward.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Our chief, chief of police, I know Chief Sparks, you had a community update on last Tuesday, this past Tuesday and it was greatly attended. It was, it went really well. You have anything?
No, no business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Just to remind you all, we have an executive session tonight, so you may want to take a break between now and executive session.
Yes, ma'am.
So we set up the room.
Okay, thank you so much. Staff reports. Comments from citizens and delegates, if you have, if we have someone here, you have five minutes to address us. Any business that's remain to the City of Douglasville, come forward, please, and give your name and address for the record.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Hello, City Councilors. It's been a while. The name is Marshall Phillips. My address is seventy nine Brookside Court and I want to give you all a general update on the train and sorry for not doing so lately, I've been quite busy. I finally found myself a job, so that's good. But my general update is I'm still in talks with the Railroad Museum on retrieving the old train carriages. We're making gradual progress. We still got to clear over some hurdles on ownership since it's still on the property in Alabama. And also my second point is I know that right now the city council isn't really too interested per se in looking over the train, at least not for right now and that's understandable since I know you all have some other important stuff to look at. But my request is that later on, once you sort of have more time to focus on other things since I know there's a lot going on right now in the city, I just sort of look back at it. And again, I would love to have a discussion with you on the perks of the train because I've been getting an outpour of support, I've been having folks contact me, let the rise send me emails and some were even praising you in the city council for letting me pursue this, which is nice. And I'm hoping in the near future, maybe once things get sort of back to normal, once everyone gets their vaccinations, once we're able to maneuver some more, we can go to more detail on how to get the train running again. I do think it's a great idea for the city, especially for tourism and historical preservation. It's something I'm still pursuing and hopefully soon we can get to that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Phillips. Congratulations on your new job. I know you recently graduated from college, so we appreciate your interest in the community.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming this evening.
Lovely.
You're welcome. Okay, any other citizens and delegates who have anyone online? No? All right, well, I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss potential property disposition after taking a five minute recess. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Ooh, hearty, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.